I busted it up good, but these make it easy.
The only thing, the only thing that fit it.
It fit my left foot. And I started wearing just the, uh, just the one.
I mean, if anything's upset, I just wanna be some, you know, architecture differentiation. You're, you're just talking about...
What he submitted, it's fine.
Yeah, but just changing each, each one.
Right.
Pacifier?
Well, what we're saying is...
Okay.
But the style and, the comp, it's, the style.
The style is fine.
Okay.
Just don't give us that one and then...
I'll remember that.
...have that same elevation and it's hardy plank or shake.
Got to work it tonight?
Okay, yeah, I'm looking over there.
You make it in three minutes?
It can be the same architectural style, just give us... It's fine.
Okay. You guys ready, Rusty?
Yeah.
All right. I think this thing's already on. Trying to set me up, aren't ya? Uh-huh. The judge trying to set me up. I'll stay away from that. All right, good evening and welcome to the City of Smyrna Planning and Zoning Meeting. It's March thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. At six P M. this meeting is called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all your electronic devices be turned off as they have a tendency to interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, there will be a presentation from city staff followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the opportunity for the applicant to print, present their case and answer any questions from the board. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. Please come forward one at a time, sign the sign-in sheet at the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please address all your comments to the board. Any questions that we can answer, we will do our best to get those from the applicant for you, okay? All right, the first item on our agenda is two zero, item two zero one seven dash one zero five. This is public hearing zoning request, Z one seven dash zero zero five. It's rezoning from R fifteen to R A D conditional for the development of five single-family residents. It's a two point two acre track at landlot five twenty-seven. This is twelve fifty-eight Hayes Drive. The applicant is Joshua W. Hall. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
Good evening. This rezoning will go, you guys will hear it tonight, you'll have a public hearing. Make a recommendation to mayor and council. They'll have a final public hearing in action on April seventeenth. The subject property is located at twelve fifty-eight Hayes Drive. It's approximately two point two acres in size and it's located in, in Ward Six. The applicant is proposing to demolish the single-family residence that's located on the, on the property and build four new, or I'm sorry, five new single-family homes, four of which will be on Hayes Drive, one will front on King Springs Road. So the applicant is requesting the rezone the property from R fifteen to R A D conditional. The future development map reflects suburban residential to the north, east, and south. And that land use classification calls for density less than three units per acre. To the west, there, there's a adjoining land use classification of moderate density residential, which is three to four point five units per acre. With this request, there is no request to change, there is no land use change proposed for, for the request. Here's a proposed site plan. As I stated before, you have the, the four lots on Hayes Street, on Hayes Drive, and then one lot on King Springs with about a twenty thousand square foot open space at the rear. That also encompasses the hydrology or the stormwater management facility for the site. The applicant is proposing a front setback of thirty feet, exterior side of ten feet. And we mean by exterior is the, the sides that abut exist, you know, existing adjoining properties. The interior sides, he wants five foot setback and those are the side setbacks in between the new lots and then a rear setback of thirty. As part of this request, he's requesting four variances. One for the reduction of lot size from fifteen thousand to twelve thousand. Next, a reduction in lot width from a hundred feet down to fifty-five feet. Reduction in the front setback from thirty-five to thirty and a reduction of the interior side from ten feet to five. And as you can see, staff is supportive of the three requests, but is not supportive of the front, back, front setback reduction. Just to highlight what I said earlier, that this is location of twenty thousand square feet of open space. And then the, the detention pond. Here, the proposed building elevations, this is the type of architecture that he's proposing for the homes. Picture of the subject site. And then adjoining surrounding properties. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from R fifteen to R A D conditional for five single-family homes at a density of two point two seven units per acre with following conditions. We will apply the standard conditions from section twelve oh one except for conditions two, eight, ten, and seventeen. The standard conditions will encompass basically building composition, protective covenances, open space requirements, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, burying of debris, and tree ordinance and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, we're also proposing some special conditions. Thirteen requires a minimum setbacks. As you can see, we're requiring a minimum front setback of thirty-five feet, which is the same as our, our fifteen zoning classification. An exterior side of ten, an interior side of five, and a, and a rear setback of thirty. Number fourteen deals with the minimum lot size and that's keeping it at twelve thousand square feet. And fifteen deals with a minimum driveway length twenty-two feet and that's measured from, from the edge of side, back of sidewalk to the front face of the building. And then sixteen requires a, a five-foot sidewalk to be built on Hayes Drive and, and King Springs. Seventeen requires the protection of trees within the limits of disturbance if they're planned to be saved and removal of trees that are not protected during the development process. Eighteen requires a storm management facility to be located on HOA property. Nineteen ties the, the zoning of the property to the submitted site plan. Twenty ties the zoning of the property to the proposed elevations. Twenty-one is a list of agreed upon stipulations by the, by the applicant. And twenty-two requires that there should be substantial architectural differentiate, differenti- uh, differentiation between the proposed homes. No two homes should have the same building elevations. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application, please. Good evening, Mr. Sams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning and Zoning Board, for the record, my name's Garvis Sams and I represent the applicant, Mr. Josh Hall and the, the property owner as well. Since we filed the application, there's actually been a closing on the property, so there's a different entity that actually, actually owns it now. But Mr. Hall, I'll seat right here in the, in the front and we also have with us tonight our engineer, Mr. Jeff Smith of Ridge Planning, who's seated right there in the, in the blue shirt. So at the appropriate time, if, if, if they can respond to questions, perhaps I, I cannot, then, then certainly they'll be available to do that as, as well. This is a, an application that again was expertly teed up by, by, by Mr. Martin and it did an excellent job doing that. What I'd like to do is take some of those points and expand on them a little bit and also cover some of the more salient points of, of the self-imposed and crafted stipulations and conditions that, that we've agreed to by virtue of a separate document. The, the property is, as Mr. Martin said, is two point two acres on the east side of King Spring and on, of course, the south side of Hayes Drive. It is zoned R fifteen. A substantial portion of the property surrounded is zoned R fifteen. To the south, there's an R A D conditional rezoning or development rather. And then of, of course, across Spring, King Springs Road to the, to the west, there's also another R A D conditional as, as well. The, in the zoning analysis, staff has recommended for, for approval or that you make a recommendation for approval to the mayor and, and city council. The, the, the staff, it is an interesting analysis. They use four separate R A D conditional developments within this area ranging from two point five two units per acre up to four point zero six units per acre would, would fit more in a, a moderate density, but in any event, there are A Ds that are in this neighborhood. We're at two point two seven units per acre. That's the lowest of all the R A Ds within the sub, sub-area of the, the city. It's significantly below, was, is below the, the low end and certainly below the, the high end of that as well. When we filed this application, we, we actually file showing six homes. The additional home was on King Springs and we felt like it would be better if we could utilize that space for having just the, the, the single front-loaded product there on, on King Springs. So we're down from six with the original filing to five, again, a density of two point two seven. And also, just so you'll know, even though the minimum lot size that staff has set forth is twelve thousand square feet, our average lot size is thirteen thousand, six twenty-three, again, above what is required under R A D conditional and just slightly below the, the fifteen thousand square foot requirement under its current classification of R fifteen. The, the development will include, and I know it's, it's, it's hard to discern here. Originally, the plan showed a, a joint driveway between the middle two lots on, on Hayes Drive and then separate driveway. So the total number, three curb cuts onto Hayes Drive. And then we had two lots on King Springs. And what, what's happened is we've reduced that. We plan, even though it's not fully depicted here, is to have single entries. Each home having its individual entry like the other homes that are on Hayes. And these will be front-loaded as opposed to rear-loaded for a number of reasons. A lot of it has to do with the topography that falls down toward the south. Another reason is these will be daylight basements and we just felt like it was more appropriate to not have a car parked in a basement. That's kind of a, a trend that took place in the, in the mid to late eighties, but for this particular product, that's, that didn't work and we have our agent, our, our listing agent here with us this evening that probably can tell you a lot more about marketing than I can, but it's my understanding that that's the more desirable with respect to what's, what's marketable and what's not. We fielded some calls from, from the community. We've talked, most of it's been interest, not really understanding totally what we're doing. And of course, some of the calls were precipitated before we made the revisions to the plan a week before last. I think we've been able to satisfactorily resolve those issues. We may hear differently tonight. But we also established a dialogue with your, your city's professional staff and, and have been able to garner their, their recommendation for approval for the, the zoning proposal. The, the property, as I mentioned, five homes. These are single-family detached homes ranging in size from minimum three thousand square feet upwards to forty-five hundred square feet and beyond. Price points are beginning at this, it's six hundred thousand. I'm, I'm told by, by Mr. Hall that they will exceed and that their market, their market target point is seven hundred fifty thousand dollar, dollar homes. But, but we'll, we'll contain you for sure that there'll not be any less than six hundred thousand dollars. The architectural style and composition will be substantially consistent with the architectural style you've seen. Some of the, the renderings show front-loaded, some show rear-loaded. That's not a decision that, that was made because this was in flux until actually about two weeks ago when, as far as entrance, when we met with your staff. And I don't wanna mischaracterize things, but I think staff's really neutral with respect to whether they're rear or, or, or front-loaded garages. The composition of the homes will consist of mixture of brick, stack stone, hardy plank, siding, cedar shake, hardy shake. And, and one of the stipulations that's been added actually today is there'll be no elevation rendering architectural look of one home that will replicate, be replicated on the next home. In other words, these are not gonna be four homes. They're gonna look alike. They'll all have differentiations or devi- deviations from the, the house next door. Again, from a marketing spec, perspective, it would be suicide to, to do otherwise. And I don't, of course, mean literally. But I know my wife, when we were buying a house, she did not want any other houses in our neighborhood to look like ours. So I think a lot of people think that way and certainly your staff thinks that way as well, as well as, as I think our agent. All these homes will be for sale. This is not a rental-type program and there's not a percentage that will be for rent. These will all be for sale homes. There'll be a mandatory homeowners association. There'll be covenants, conditions, and restrictions. The HOA is gonna be responsible for the maintenance of all common areas. As you can see, we exceed the open space requirements under the city's code. Also, the HOA will be responsible for the detention that you're seeing depicted there. The required open space, tree preservation areas, and there are some specimen trees on the, the property. And the first time I met Mr. Hall, he came in and, and said, "Trees sell houses. I wanna try to keep as many trees as I can." And there are some really beautiful trees on the, the property and he's going to endeavor to try to do that. In any event, we have to comply with your tree preservation replacement ordinance. And our engineer concurrently with the site plan and the stip, and the application submitted those tree preservation and replacement plans. Also, the HOA will be responsible to the easement or for the easement that you see coming from King Springs to the, the common area and the detention pond. And we labeled it as such just so there'd be no confusion later on down the line as to someone thinking that perhaps it, it's an access easement, when in fact it's not. It's an easement specifically for purposes of access to accommodate the open space and the detention area. Mr. Hall will be agreeing to the implementation of a third-party management company that will handle the, the day-to-day operations of the mandatory HOA, be responsible for ensuring that the association is properly insured as well and that all monies are, are in place in terms of the obligations, which I just told you the HOA is going to, going to have. At some point, it'll be turned over to the HOA. They'll become the declarant. They'll be the ones in charge of enforcing the, the covenants, conditions, and strict architectural controls that'll be on the property as well. The, the landscape plan that, that will be submitted, this is really a function of plan review and it's going to screen or show screening of all H V A C-type units and, and home utilities. When I say screened, the utility will either be underground. It'll be screened from view either by fencing, a birmingham landscaping. But it's just so they're not unattractive to people that are next door, that are adjacent, or that are going down either King Springs or Hayes Drive. There'll be sotted front side and rear yards. I suspect that'll be irrigated. All that's not part of the stipulations. The detention pond is going to be appropriately landscaped as well and fenced. And, and that again is a function of plan review, but obviously that's a component we have to have. And if we can make it disappear with landscaping and, and fencing and birmingham, then we'll do that. The City of, City of Smyrna's engineering department, that was the first thought Mr. Hall made before I ever met him. He went out with city engineer Eric Randall to the site. And if, if you look at the orientation, the site plan, if you look in the southeastern corner of the property, there is no stream on it, but there's a stream head that, that comes close to that. We're not subject to any of its stream bank buffers or those restrictions under your ordinance, so we don't need buffer averaging and, or anything like that. But I just wanted you to know, there's no blue lines, there's no water that traverses the property except stormwater management precipitated water. As far as the configuration and positioning of onsite detention, the city engineer, this is conceptual. The city engineer will, will follow what your ordinance provides and he's asked that we present prior to going into plan review a conceptual, well, actually it'll be more than conceptual. It'll, it'll, it'll be a definitive hydrology report because answers can't be given unless specifics are known with respect to hydrology. And of course, the city doesn't require a, a full hydrology report. But wanted you to know that early on before this application was filed or even discussed with me, those issues were, were looked at. The, the city works, a public works director rather, is saying that he wants to see, as does the city, sidewalk, curb, and gutter along Hayes Drive and along King Springs. Also, we have access to water, both with respect to the lot on King Springs and the lots on Hayes Drive. We're going to have to bore under the roads. That's our responsibility to do that in conjunction with help from the city engineer, Mr. Randall, and from the public works director. And we're gonna be also in terms of gaining access to water. Water's available to the site. They've asked us to cap any unused water connections and then to be responsible for getting to those lines. We don't require any off-site easements to, to gain access to water or to sewer. Your, your fire department is always, is always very specific down to the fire engine that they want to be able to access the site. And I think it's fire engine or fire ladder engine number four. And so what they do in plan review, we have to provide them with a, a turning radius pro forma. And we also have to comply with the, the, the turning performance analysis with respect to how fires are gonna be fought from this. And I, I will tell you that the city of Smyrna probably gets more into the fire department regulations with respect to life safety and fire prevention as much or probably more than, than any other jurisdiction I present zonings in. The, the amenity areas, the, the community features, everything has to be ADA accessible. That's just not, it's not just a Smyrnico. That's a, that's of course a federal regulation, so that will be the case. We have a stipulation that's been crafted so that the ward council person, which in this case is Councilman Doug Stoner, will have the ability, as will your community development director, to make minor modifications to this as it proceeds through plan review. And I don't mean increase the density or, or change our access locations, but if we had to tweak and move a building here or a property line there, then if it's, if it's minor as deemed by Mr. Sudruth and his staff, then, then that will put him and Councilman Stoner, whoever the ward representative is at the, at the time. The, we think this is appropriate from a land use planning perspective. Your staff's giving a recommendation for approval. It meets your future land use map. It meets your comprehensive land use plan. It's consistent with the tender of development, particularly the high-end nature of that in, in this sub-area of Smyrna. So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, my client, it's consultant and I are here, so at the appropriate time. And that may be before, anytime, we're here to answer questions.
Thank you much, Mr. Sams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Before he steps down, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Sams? All right, Mr. Campo.
Just a couple of questions. You requested four variances and the staff, the community staff is in agreement with three.
Yes, sir.
The fourth, a reduction in the setback from thirty thirty-five, they're not supportive. Does that present a problem for you?
Yes, sir.
That's all right? All right. The second thing is you're going to be building five custom homes.
Yes, sir.
We just wanna make sure that these are gonna be individual, the elevations are all gonna be different. You, you've presented a, in a picture of some homes. I assume that your plan is to use varied materials and to have five separate homes and nothing cookie cutter.
And that's a, that's a good point, Mr. Campo. And we, we had talked about that early in the process, but that wasn't solidified until this afternoon, not because of any recalcitrants on anybody's part. Just really hadn't, hadn't thought about that anybody would really wanna do that unless it's a townhome development. So to answer your questions, we're amenable to the way Mr. Martin and Mr. Sudruth have written that, that stipulation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question for you, Mr. Sams.
Sir.
Concerning the common area, you mentioned ADA accessible and, and so is it open like for other people to, to enjoy? What's, what are you gonna have there, that kinda thing?
You know, we, we, good, good, good questions, Ross. We, we've kinda, I say we, the development community's kinda gotten away from pavilions, gazebos, things that they're, that their best day or the first day they're constructed and they're underutilized. What we anticipate for this is meaningfully, meaningfully position pedestrian connectivity to the site for benches clustered around fire pits. I know that sounds kinda prehistoric, but I mean, really, fire pits are a big deal, outdoor fireplaces. So, so benches, decorative type of sidewalks and ways that, that it can meander through there. Top, top, topography permitting. It, it falls, as you can see, with the, the topo lines and the contours that are on there. But that, that's our thought and that's our process to have communal or community gathering points for these five homes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Sams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and please sign in the sign-in sheet. Sign the sign-in sheet. Thank you. All right, come on. We don't bite, I promise.
Hi.
Good evening and welcome.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Nuss. I'll sign into this. And my husband and I, Brad, we live directly across the street from where this would go. So twelve forty-nine Hayes is where we live. So directly across from those four planned houses. I appreciate y'all letting us come and talk tonight. We bought our house actually two years ago this month. And one of the things that really attracted us to the neighborhood was the established trees and the older houses and all of the charm and character that Smyrna has. That's one of the things that we feel like really makes it valuable, much more so than just what we could resell our house for, but valuable, valuable for us to live in. And we love the community feel. So we very much don't support this because we feel like it will take away from that community feel. My, uh, front of our house is where my, my office is. I work out of my home. And I look out my front window every day to that big beautiful tree that's in the front of this lot that surely will be cut down. And so one of the things that, that I think it would really take away from the neighborhood is not only some of that established look and feel, but also just the community that we have. I hear them saying things like they wanna have an HOA for these five houses and this great little bench and fire pit for those five houses. And that sounds great for those five houses. But what we really love about the neighborhood is the community feel that we have with all of our neighbors. And to us, it just feels like this is gonna segregate that, that, those five houses from everyone else. Also, I understand that these lots kinda sound like they would be manageable, but on Hayes Drive, you know, our street, I understand there's some smaller lots on King Spring, which is not really our neighborhood. We don't feel like it. In our neighborhood on, on Hayes Drive, it doesn't seem like the slot size is consistent with the rest of the houses on that street. We all have big, pretty lots and lots of, lots of trees and lots of space between the houses. And it seems like this would just be four cluster houses. And even if they do look different from one another, they won't look anything like the rest of our neighborhood. My house is built in nineteen fifty-five. Um, it's totally renovated and beautiful, but it looks like it was built in nineteen fifty-five. And so these houses are gonna be brand-new-looking houses and four of them are all right there, right in front of my street. We're also concerned about the parking and the traffic, you know, because there are four driveways right in front of our driveway. And even though I know based on city ordinances, you know, we're under how many people in the streets and all that kinda stuff. But, you know, there's a lot of people who park in the streets. When they have family over, there's the, uh, Tolson Park real close to us. And so people from Tolson Park park along those streets and things like that all the time. And we're concerned that with four houses right across the street from us, that we're gonna get into a lot of, you know, more traffic, more parking issues, things with the, you know, garbage and all that kinda stuff. But, but mostly we would just love to see fewer houses, you know, put on that lot because we just think it's gonna congest the area and take away from our neighborhood feel.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Nuss.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I feel a lot of pressure to write fast.
Ah, take your time. You're only holding up everybody's name.
I know, right? I'm sorry.
No worries.
A lot of stuff to fill out.
You can sit down on the front row.
There we go. Thank you.
No worries. All right, good evening and welcome. You just stepped in front of somebody, but that's all right. Ladies first, ladies first, come on, you're closest. Oh. No tag team in the developer, please.
She asked if I'd go first.
That's fine, come on, yeah, absolutely, no worries. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, my name is Mike Frank. I'm a Smyrna resident living on King Springs Road. I have a question of, Mr. Sams, I believe, mentioned the home being front-loaded, I don't understand what that is.
Means the garage is going to come off of the streets on Hayes for each house, that you won't drive around back and load the garage?
Well, the problem is on King Springs.
I believe that's the same thing, but we'll get that clarified for you as soon as you...
Well, I'm just going to make, make a statement that over the past 20 years, with my house being included, I counted exactly 25 new homes being built on King Springs. I personally was told that there would be one house, one driveway with a turnaround, so that the vehicle could be turned around and safely exit onto King Springs, which is a major thorough, thoroughway these days. It's a 35 mile an hour, double yellow lane road, it's well, it's well-used. And with the garages not facing the street, and I drove down the street just today, every, all 25 homes had abided by those, those, those stipulations, whether those were written or not written, you know, they, you know, they were, they were followed.
So let me understand, so you're saying that there are 25 homes over the last 20 years have been built on King Springs, and they may come off of King Springs, but the garages don't face King Springs, or side entry or something like that?
Side or rear.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And it's a, it's a, I believe it's a safety thing above all, as well as a cosmetic thing.
Okay.
So, and then, of course, I was totally against the shared driveways. I drive around, I don't see any driveways being shared, at least in the immediate area, but I believe Mr. Sams says he has corrected that.
I believe they have.
And I was going to also make a point that I personally know that there is a well on the property, and I just want to make sure that it's, that care is taken, so it's probably, it's properly closed and capped. And lastly, oh, he kind of breezed over the easement, he said, an easement off of King Springs, I'd like to know where that easement is going to be or proposed.
Rusty, can you show them the site plan right there?
So, right in between, yeah, I'm, I'm the lower property there, so I, I have a home that sits 10, 10 feet, my house and bedroom sit 10 feet from that property line. You're trying to tell me there's going to be a sidewalk there with pedestrians walking over that easement?
As I understand...
There'll be an access. I heard talk about picnic branches, and I've heard, you know, sidewalks and pedestrians. Right, but how, how are people going to access that? Okay, from the rear of the homes? Okay, so, so it's not a public walkway, people are going to be walking by?
No, no, the, the only reason he's got the easement is so that one neighbor that had the most space wouldn't be the one that they victimized every time they needed to clean it out.
And, and that probably makes perfect sense, because that is where the telephone pole is, and guy, and guy wires are currently placed also. So that may, that may work out quite well.
And it's almost a guarantee that, you know, they're going to stay 20 feet off of your property with anything real or substantial.
Okay. And then, one last thing is that, also, I do know, in front of, in front of my house on King Springs, and, and the adjacent lot with that single home is proposed being built, there is no, there is no available sewer at, at this time in front of that house.
Okay.
The public works director's made the comment that they will have, they'll either have to bring sewer from King Springs Court, or they'll have to bring it from Hayes Drive at the north, they may have to do an extension down King Springs.
Make sure the council knew.
Yeah.
There was no current.
That, that's one of our review criteria.
Very good. I'll sign in, and now I'm finished.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Frank, really appreciate your, your comments, and a couple of really big tidbits there, well, and a, and a sewer line, those are always beneficial for the builder to know about that, can get expensive, all those things. Why don't we, oh, we just need your name. Right, 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 gotcha. Oh, okay, so they don't need your name, they don't need your, your full address for it, they just want to be able to know who you are, so that they can attach you to a piece of property if we don't get the address correct out of the gate. So, all right, well, they must have a new form up there. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Taylor, I reside at 3795 Ashwood Drive, so I'm in Forest Hills, just around the corner from this property, walk my dog in front of it just about every day. I, I just want to note that the city's online calendar for this evening showed a meeting agenda for January, so I suspect there are likely a number of citizens who don't know that this is being heard this evening, so I want to enter that on the record. And regarding this proposal, I just asked that if you look at the lots on Hayes Drive, the lot furnished for this property that we're talking about is as wide as just two of those lots, yet the staff has recommended putting four houses into that space. And as a person who walks throughout our neighborhood, I would testify that that would substantially change the character, it would damage the character of that particular street. There's no precedent for this development on our streets like Hayes and Cliffwood and Dunn or any other streets in this particular neighborhood. There are RAD developments in the immediate area, yet all of them front on King Springs Road. So they don't change the character of our streets like Hayes. So the argument for this particular property is that because it's contiguous in one corner to some of the other RAD developments on King Springs, that that should open the door to this sort of reduced lot size and variances on Hayes, which I would strongly disagree with. I, I think Mr. Campo asked a remarkably insightful question when he inquired about the architectural character of the front of these lots. If you'll notice that there are lots that are now about half as wide as the other lots on Hayes, that's going to make it extraordinarily difficult to have much diversity at all in the front of these houses, because they're going to have to put a one or two-car garage on the front, an entry on the lower floor, and then whatever you can do with the upstairs, because there's no room to do anything else. So there's really, I thought Mr. Sams did a great job explaining away the side entry for the garages or the rear entry, but the fact of the matter is, if you consider the way that these are arrayed on the lots, there's just not enough room to put a driveway down the side to do anything other than garage and front door on the lower level and, and a second floor. So I'm concerned that the character of these houses, even though they want them to be substantially different, they might have some different materials, but in terms of massing and the way that they sit on the property, they're going to look remarkably similar, and that's going to make them remarkably different from anything else that sits on this street. I'm also very sensitive to the trees, but I think we've already covered that, and I would say, I, I know that the lot we're considering is in a regular shape, and in the proposal that's been submitted, Mr. Sams has argued that there's a taking if this isn't rezoned, but I personally have no sympathy for a developer who had the opportunity to ride a successful rezoning into the purchase and sale agreement for this property before he or she bought the property. So this could have already been taken care of, so I don't think that the city or the residents or the people who are going to have to live with this long after the development is gone owe any debt in that regard. I'm disappointed so far that our focus is only on density, I appreciate that there are people coming to talk about the character of the neighborhood and how important it is to protect the character, so I hope that we'll focus on that, because if we don't, if we only look at the density, if we follow the remarks that have been made by staff, this opens the door for RAD developments in our entire neighborhood across Forest Hills, and that's not something that we want. So I'll just respectfully ask that you support our neighbors and protect the character of our neighborhood by casting your vote against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application?
Hi, I'm Kristin Osborne, I also live on Hayes Drive, across the street from this development. I don't think, I am definitely opposed to this, I don't have any concerns other than what others have already stated. We looked in this neighborhood for over a year before we bought, primarily because we loved the lot, the character, the charm that this neighborhood has. And not being familiar with zoning, I had to look it up prior to coming to this meeting to understand what was being proposed. But when I see what the current zoning is, one of the key things that caught my eye was that it's to encourage similar and complementary-type residential development, and I feel that this is the exact opposite of that within this neighborhood. It will stand out, it will have its own HOA, it'll be cluster homes, which is not what we want in the Forest Hills community, and for that reason, along with all the others discussed, I'm opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne.
Yeah.
All right. Come on, come on up. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Connor, I live at 3700 Lee Street, which is around the corner from the development. I'm also a resident of Forest Hills, and I just want to echo, echo a lot of the other neighbors that I hear in opposing this, we continue to see our neighborhood change in character. A lot of people moved in the neighborhood because of the trees, because of the single-family homes and the lot sizes that we have. I think what this is opening the door to is more development. I think they've done a good job of saying what they're going to do to try and protect the trees, but unfortunately, what we're seeing with all the other developers coming in, where they're just absolutely clear-cutting the lots and deforesting Forest Hills, so they're just taking all the trees out, so it's a major concern. Again, the density of it, I mean, they're completely changing the look and the feel of the neighborhood, and we're seeing this time and time again, where these people are just cramming these McMansions on these lots that completely alter in look the feel of the neighborhood. You see that all up and down Lee, Lee Street, so anyways, that's, that's my comment.
Well, thank you for your comments. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Adam Smith, I actually live in that corner right there, 3623 King Springs. I was under the impression, the meeting started at seven, so I did not get to hear the portion about the trees, which is my biggest concern. If we could restate what was said about the trees...
The only comment that I remember, anybody, feel free to add in here, but, was that the, the builder, developer prefers to keep as many of the trees as possible, because I believe the quote was "trees sell houses." That's about the only addressing of the trees we've had at this point.
Okay. So there's no, nothing stated that the trees will absolutely be left, it's just, we're going to try and leave them?
Nothing at this point, no, to my knowledge. And Rusty, you want to add in there?
I mean, that's a plan review issue that we have to resolve once they get their final grading done, to see how much impact they're going to impact the critical root zones or the, or the root plates of these trees.
So that's code talk for the city arborist is going to determine which trees can be saved and which trees have to go.
I mean, a lot of these trees on the front are specimen-sized trees, so our ordinance gives them a three, three times the credit for the tree if they save it during, he has substantial benefit to, to save the trees if he can do it, but sometimes there's too much impact on the trees to, to, to save them, and we don't want to transfer the cost of removal or create a hazardous situation for the, for the homeowner that's moving in.
Absolutely correct.
So, I can tell you from living right next to all this, that the, the root balls are going to be disturbed by putting houses there, so they're gonna have to take the trees down. And to me, that's a huge thing, because the water oaks in Smyrna are the history of Smyrna. Like everyone's been saying, the character. You drive through these new neighborhoods and you see all these small, little, tiny, you know, trees sitting everywhere, and you don't see any character. You know, you drive down through Buckhead and through parts of downtown Atlanta with these older homes and these beautiful oak trees and things like that, and that's where that character comes from. And by them taking out, I mean, these trees are 200-plus-year-old oak trees. If they were dying or had some issues, I could understand, but to take down perfectly healthy trees that, you know, have a big part of, you know, Smyrna's history, I mean, they tell all kinds of stories. I mean, one day, they'll be able to drill cores from these trees and be able to tell you what, you know, the weather was like, you know, in Smyrna, you know, hundreds of years ago, things like that. So, yeah, taking the trees out is my biggest concern. Don't want to step on anyone's feet, because we're going to be right next to the development, but protecting those trees is my number one concern.
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Smith.
Thanks. And what is this sheet right here?
It's raising your taxes. Sorry, just sign your name, just so we can get it right on the minutes.
Was I wrong that it was at 7:00 PM?
It's 6:00 PM.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
No worries. Anyone else? Good evening and welcome.
How you doing?
Doing well, you?
I'm doing good. Name is Brad Nuss, my wife Rebecca spoke, we live across the street. And I guess just to kind of echo what everybody else is saying, too, the charm and the character of the neighborhood is, I feel like what we're going to lose with this essentially brand-new neighborhood that's going in across the street from us. You, Forest Hills is such a unique area that you don't find it that often anymore, in single-family homes, on larger lots, mature landscaping. This you can find just about anywhere in Atlanta, and that is the draw to Forest Hills, is what we have. Single-family homes, mature landscaping, the community feel, people being able to walk up and down the streets. That is my major concern, too. So just wanted to echo what everybody else was saying, I feel like with this, the character of the neighborhood is, is going to be diminished greatly.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Nuss.
Do y'all need a blood sample for this?
That's, that's at mayor and council. We don't do needles here. I'm sorry. You know, it never ceases to amaze me, the wonderful people that live in Forest Hills, and I mean that, because every time we have a contentious issue, you guys come up, you're very professional, you state your claim. I drive through your neighborhood almost every day, and it is a truly remarkable place in Smyrna, it truly is. So, I do appreciate everybody behaving, if you will, but it's a really special neighborhood. Come on up, you're going to get bumped again, come on up. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, my name is Sue Levine, I live at 1294 Cliffwood Drive, around the block, and I think this whole thing is just sad, just because, you know, we lived in the area, it was Mr. Hayes's, you know, property, and, you know, so this is just like a sad time. And, you know, the, I think the buyers got a really good price, and I just think this is so tacky. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not as well-behaved as the rest, I am a transplant from New York. So, yeah, pretty much, there's nothing much to say, except I thought this was a secret neighborhood. I was driving to King Springs Elementary when I moved here, I was a substitute teacher, and I thought, ah, I found a secret neighborhood, it's like a secret, I got to live there someday. There's a pool and tennis courts, I could not believe all the trees and everything, and sure enough, after living it aft and downs for many years, in 2004, I bought a house on Cliffwood Drive. So, it's like a dream come true, living in this, this, this classic, beautiful neighborhood with all that character and all those trees, which you can see even from Google Earth or whatever, it's just amazing, the trees. And, so anyway, the neighborhood, it's got character, lots of people have come in and tried to do lots of things. The things that have been done have been unique but tasteful, they've been unique, but they haven't been tacky. This is just, oh, I cannot, I think Mr. Hayes would be turning him over in his grave if he saw what was happening to his property right now. And to have to live with that, to have to live with the neighborhood going in that direction, is just so painful. And like I heard that other gentleman say, that some of these issues could have been worked out on the purchase, so I mean, I hate that somebody gets stuck with something when they...
Anyone else?
My name is James Savage, and I live in Hickory Hills, the last house on Lee Street. And I'm the one that's going to catch all the water. I'm right before getting flooded out. All the water, the creek runs right along Twin Oaks. My house is the corner of Lee Street and Twin Oaks. I've lived there since 1956, off and on. And I know this neighborhood better than anyone. It's Zone R-15. I see no reason to change it. And they want to flood me out. I've talked to the city about it. Nobody says, "Get flood insurance." I have never seen that creek come out of the bank until the last couple of years, and that's because of the building. All those rooftops up there, all the driveways, sidewalks. Detention pond. A detention pond going to last about two hours. When it gets filled up, the water's going to come right down to my house. And I, like I said, I live at the bottom of the hill from this project. And I thought, if I call the city, nobody tells me anything. They won't, "Well, that's your problem, you know? This is progress." Anybody got any ideas for me? It's Zone R-15.
Mr. Savage, as the Community Development Director, we coordinate during all development aspects with other city departments, which include the City Engineers Department, and that's the department that oversees drainage issues and the detention ponds. As part of these rezonings, there is a preliminary review done based on the information that is submitted by the applicant to staff. And based on the information that we've received and that the city engineers reviewed, he feels that what has been presented is indeed acceptable. Now, the exact details as to where the detention pond is going to be located, if this request is indeed approved, when they actually come in to get started, they will have to have these plans finalized and reviewed by the city engineer to make sure that the post-development, meaning the development, if this is approved, that this development doesn't create a greater flow coming off the property than exists today with that. So I understand the concern. Staff has similar concerns on all of our developments to make sure that there is not, we're not creating any kind of drainage issues. That's why it goes through that review process. Now, for me to say any more about the drainage is probably getting out beyond my expertise, but the city engineer is indeed available. And if you'd like to speak with him, if you will give the Community Development Office a call or wait until after the meeting, I'm happy to give you my card, and I'm happy to get you in touch with him.
Well, I have because ever since they put the curb cut on Dunn Street with the sidewalks, which is real good, I walk all the time, Wyden Concord and the other houses they build on are King Springs. See, all of that water comes right down Hayes, Spruce Drive, Ashwood, Lee Street, and like I say, I am the one at the bottom of the hill. Me and another lady named Ms. Williams, I don't know if you've heard of her or not, she lives on Hickory Circle at Twin Oaks. And this, the water is washing the creek away. And matter of fact, a couple of months ago, the creek washed out a couple of trees where they washed their roots away, and it hit two houses. I mean, not two houses, but two cars came close to hitting two houses. I think that was, oh, maybe four, five, three, four months ago. And now there's one tree on Ashwood that is starting to lean towards my house. And as the creek washes away, the trees are going to fall, and it's going to fall on my property. And this, like I say, when they build these houses up there, the rooftops, the driveways, look at the runoff. That detention pond is not going to hold water. It'll hold it for a while, but where's it go when it comes out of the detention pond? It comes right to my house, you know?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for the city engineer. I wanted to assure you that the city engineer is indeed part of this process, and I'm sure he is aware of everything that you've just spoken about. But because the issue's been brought up, regardless of whether this request is approved or denied by the Planning Commission tonight, it will still move forward to mayor and council for the April 17th meeting. So because you've raised that concern beyond what staff had referenced in the report, I will make sure that the city engineer indeed addresses that aspect for you. And he will be at the mayor and council meeting, but for us to have a discussion, your point has been noted. I can't rely on, you know?
Well, I'm totally against it because like I say, this is our Zone R-15, and it should stay R-15.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Savage. All right. Good evening and welcome.
My name is Janet Harvey. I live at 3300 Lee Street in Forest Hills. I've been there about a long time. I'm just urging you, please, to deny this zoning change. We all have to follow the rules. I am not an anti-big-house person. I happen to have a big house. But when we had our house redeveloped, we had to follow the rules. I had to follow the rules based on what I had in front of me, and I could not, it would never occur to me to say, mm, I want something else, so let me just get someone to do it for me, to ask for a variance. That's not how the world should work. There's a rule, and we all have to follow the same rules. I'm asking you to deny this zoning request. The zoning is protect current residents. By denying this request, you at least tell us that you understand, appreciate, and want to respect and protect the rights of the people and the neighbors and the residents who have invested their time, their money, their energy in creating a charming neighborhood. So we're asking that you just deny this zoning request. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harvey. I'm sorry, geez. It's on me. All right. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Begala. I live on King Springs Court, and I just wanted to state that I'm opposed to this zoning change. Just looking at those four houses on that piece of property is definitely going to change the neighborhood. And they're saying 3,000 square foot homes, so that pretty much means that house is going to go straight up with a basement. And those houses are going to be higher than anything that's over there in that neighborhood right now. So I'm just thinking that'll definitely be our household. A lot of other people have already mentioned those, but I just wanted to kind of stress that point because there's nothing like that in that area. I'm across the street, yes, those houses are a little newer and a little different, but on that side of King Springs where Hayes goes, those houses, none of them over there look like what they're proposing right here.
Thank you, Mr. Begala.
Thank you.
All right. I think, is there anybody else? Last call. Okay. I didn't learn that at the bar, I promise. I swear. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask if there are any further discussion, any questions up here from the board for the applicant? I mean, we, go ahead, Mr. Campo.
I would just like to say one thing. I think the board really can relate to everyone here and what they're saying. You want to keep the neighborhood the way it was, the way it is. The problem is, as you know, in everything around you, it's changing, that this is something that is going to continue to happen. The one thing you hope for, though, if it comes to your neighborhood, is that you come up with something that is quality. And I think one of the things that you need to take into consideration, it's going to happen, it's just happening all over Smyrna. But, you know, your R-15 zoning is 15,000 square feet. The RAD zoning is 15,000 street. They're proposing a five homes, custom homes in the $600,000 range, in the 12,000 to 13,000 square foot. It's going to be, it's going to have an impact on your property. Your property values are going to increase. And I know it's very difficult to even consider this.
All right, all right, hey, enough, enough. Let him speak.
It's difficult to consider this, but it's just something, it's happening all over Smyrna. And I just want to tell you what you've said, I think you've impressed the board, but we just, you know, we have to look at the bigger picture, and I hope you understand that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? All right, we've been real nice this long in the meeting. Let's not ruin everything we've accomplished tonight in a few heated comments. What I will say, and I don't often opine on the development because it's not my position. My position is to make sure everybody has a fair voice, that we hear the applicant, that we hear the citizens, and we have gone way beyond the allotted time we gave the applicant for the citizens, and we do that because, you know, if we all put ourselves in your shoes, if it was us out there, we'd want to have the same opportunity. So I make these guys wait for their dinner because of that, because I want to hear everybody's voice. Having said that, this development, when I saw it initially, not surprised where it is, but if you took this development and/or this size parcel, and I know it's a little bit unique, and you put it in about six or seven other areas in this town, they're going to ask for six or seven or eight houses on the exact same size parcel. Not saying that's a justification, I cringe every time I see those, but this appears to me, at least mathematically, that it is a conservative proposal. And what I would suggest is regardless of how the vote goes, and I have no idea how the vote's going to go, that no matter what happens at this meeting, that you guys reach out to the developer because at some point, something's going to happen here, and a little bit of sugar goes a lot further than vinegar in getting the type of development that you think is more consistent with the neighborhood you live in and the neighborhood you want to live in. I live three doors down from 13 houses that went in on a parcel not much bigger than this several years ago. And those people that live in that neighborhood, they're all our new neighbors. Their houses don't look like our houses. But it's, in some ways, it's an unfortunate part of progress, but in others, it is fortunate. It's fortunate that we live in a place that people want to be, a place that's convenient to downtown, a place that offers us, you know, a lot of the different benefits to be here in Smyrna. And I'm proud that I live in Smyrna, I'm proud that I get the opportunity to meet all my neighbors in this fashion and out on the street. I do think you guys have a unique neighborhood. I do appreciate how respectful you all are every time you come up, and it's not just tonight, it's every case. You guys always do a real, real good job of not attacking the developer, and it would, regardless of what happens here tonight, the developer, whether it's this gentleman or the next one, would do well to work with you guys to come up with something that fits both in your community and in your hearts. So without any further comments, anybody else? Mr. Sudrith, Mr. Martin? Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, concerning rezoning, we have a motion to approve. Mr. Campo, do we have a second? We have a second, Mr. Monroe? Apparently, I'm allergic to Max because I'm draining all over the place back here. So y'all forgive me. Did everybody refuse to vote, or what am I looking at here? We're waiting for one, okay. No. You gave it to me and then you took it away. Can I see it, please? It's four to two? Four to two, it's approved, four to two? Okay. The motion is approved, the application is approved, four to two. My apologies, it's not a joke, I don't see it on my screen, which I think they're playing a joke on me. So the motion's approved, four to two. This will be heard at mayor and council. Mr. Martin? April 17th at 7:00 P. M. in this chamber. Thank you, thank you all for coming out, and thank you for taking the time to have your voice heard. All right. The last item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the February 13, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Are the board members in possession of the minutes? Are there any changes that need to be made at this time? If not, please vote to approve the minutes. Got a motion to approve, Mr. Roberts. We got a second, Ms. Harrington? Please vote. I said, "vote." You're toying with me now. Ms. Harrington, she seconded. Oh. No wonder this thing's such a mess. All right. The votes approved, the votes approved 6-0 with one absent, or the minutes are approved 6-0. All right. Is there any further business, Mr. Martin, Mr. Sudrith? Mr. Staubes? Okay. Without any further business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:07 P. M.